This conference will now be recorded.
So.
Very moral.
Fully healed and extend this. The Paul vision.
I was fortunate to get back in.
The opposite, you say we're going to go.
It's 5:30, let's go ahead and open up with me.
Commissioner Beeson?
Present.
Commissioner Stoman?
Here.
Commissioner Stover?
Here.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Here.
Mayor Warren?
Here. If you want to participate in the open prayer and pledge allegiance.
That's great. Father, thank you for bringing us here tonight. And I just ask that you be with us as we're, commissioners are making decisions of them to make the best decisions possible for the city. Asking to be with all of us as we're speaking as well, make sure that we're clear with Jesus' name.
Amen. I plead my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any addition or additions to the agenda?
We have several parts. So additions, we, section two, under awards and proclamations, we want to add item one. And that's a proclamation or to proclaim June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth, National Independence Day, 2024 in Arkansas City. And then another consent agenda, item number three, we want to receive and file the 2023 audit report by Gordon CPA. Consent agenda, item number four, approve the donation of a surplus siren to Bolton Township in the IXL District. And under new business, state manager department, item number two, we want to ordinance exempting the application of KSA 41-719D to allow the sale and consumption of alcohol liquor at designated area of the east corner of Central Avenue and Summit for one day commencing June 6th, 2024.
Mayor, I move we approve the additions to the agenda.
Second. Discussion on it? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved? Okay, approve of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, awards and proclamations, I got a proclamation read, proclaim June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth, National Independence Day of 2024 in Arkansas City. Whereas Juneteenth represents the first day of celebrating the freedom of the United States for Americans, and the last known celebration for ending enslavement. And whereas the Emancipation Proclamation, which freed enslaved people living in the Confederacy was enacted, it took effect on January the 1st, 18863. And whereas over two years later, June 19th, 1865, the news of the freedom finally reached enslaved people living in Galveston, Texas. And those who are formerly enslaved were recognized for the first time as citizens, Black Americans to commemorate Juneteenth with celebration across the country, building new lives, new traditions, and we honor today throughout storytelling, education, music ceremonies, celebrations. And whereas Juneteenth is a day of profound weight and power and the legacy of sympathetic racism and inequality and humanity. But it, but it is a day that also reminds us of incredible capacity to heal, hope, emerge from the darkest moments with purpose and resolve. And whereas the history of Kansas as a free state, emphasis on the value of justice, humanity, and rejection of bigotry and oppression. Whereas 99 years after the inception of the Juneteenth, President Lenneby Johnson signed the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Therefore thereafter, the Voting Rights Act of 1965 to guarantee all Americans inhaleable rights. And whereas ongoing national dialogue of the meaning of freedom, Kansas remains committed to ensuring the value and dignity of all people. And whereas the struggle of freedom for justice for all people must continually remember and wage. Now therefore, the mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas, those who hear will claim that June 19th is Juneteenth, National Independence Day, and in Arkansas City, and encourage all citizens of the city of Arkansas City observe that Juneteenth, National Independence Day, and the Cali County, Juneteenth celebration, other appropriate ceremonies and activities. We're supposed to have somebody here, but they're going to be late. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't see you go in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Here's some flyers for the event to share with your commissioners. We appreciate you guys for following Juneteenth again this year.
Thank you. Okay, that's going to be the, it'll be the Wilson Park on the 15th and 19th.
So on the 15th is at Wilson Park, and then the 19th, we have a smaller intimate, more resource space for families at Levy Watson Park.
Okay.
So on the actual holiday, the 19th is at Levy Watson, and then the 15th is at Wilson.
Okay. Can we put that on our website or, okay? Here, I'll give you this.
Okay, I'll share it, yeah.
We'll put it on our website so people can see it.
We have it.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah.
Consent agenda, we had two items we added to it. I'll just go ahead and read off what the consent agenda, well, it's up there. It's to certify Mayor Jay Warren's appointment for Dwayne Eastman and Dottie Smith to be on the historical preservation board, and appointment of Michael Bergadini to, to the planning commission board and receive. And then the third one, we receive the file, the 2000 audit by Gordon CPA. And then the fourth one, approve the donation of surplus siren to the Bolton Township in IXL District.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. So the appointment of these two people going to mess up our certified city. You have, you have two.
My most exciting thing is that it'll be the first time that board's full.
Okay. So who's, who else on the board now? Phosphor is.
JW Lozano, Kevin Cox.
Okay. Okay. No more questions.
That's it. Okay, any other questions?
Move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, so we moved second, any more discussion on it before we take a vote? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under new business.
City manager department, item number one is an ordinance prohibiting the plot and accepting land dedicated to public purposes, including here. And this is real call.
So Mr. Larry Fugate, his trust, applied to split their property up there on 1700 block of North Summit. That's Taco Bell and the little strip center. And they're going to split this up into three lots, this plot would do. So it's those two, and then there's a back lot, too. That rear portion is in the floodplain, but it's not going to affect the plot. The other thing that I think is important to point out is, it appears if you look at the plot, that there's, it's landlocked, that third lot. However, they have filed separate instruments that spells out the different access units so that they're able to, anybody can be able to go back to that if there's ever development of that in the future.
So what, why, why are they trying to do that for?
I imagine what they're doing is they're just trying to liquidate some of their properties.
Okay. And maybe for future.
The planning commission did meet on May 14th, and they, they approved the preliminary plat and recommend that you approve the final plat. There's no new, there's some new easements, but they're not public easements, they're just easements on the property. And there's no additional right of way involved either.
So if they wanted to access that back property, could they go through Ace Hardware's parking lot? Or would they need?
They should be, if they're going to follow the way that it's written out, they need to go through the, the lots with the Taco Bell.
What would they need to do if they wanted to access it from, from Ace Hardware?
They would have to get a separate.
Okay.
Thing from them.
There's a canal that runs through that, but that's, that's the only thing that's going through there, correct? I mean, from Ace Hardware, there's a ditch or.
No, the, the C Street Canal is behind Ace.
It's behind. Actually kind of see it up here.
What I'm talking about, if you go to, if you go to Ace Hardware, right along there is a concrete ditch that runs along the backside of it, too.
Yeah, they would have to have special permission to do that legally.
I'll make a motion that we've proven ordinance, proven the plot, Fugate, commercial addition, accepting land dedicated for the purpose.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion on it? Okay, if not, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Beeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, number two.
An ordinance exempting the application of KSA 41-719D to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor at a designated area of the east corner of Central Avenue and Summit Street for one day commencing June 6th, 2024. So I put this under as my item. She was not able to be here tonight, I'm the owner of the sandbar, which is Brady Web, and she would like to add a beer garden. We're already blocking that street from the alley up to Summit. So she might set chairs up and rope it off out in that area, but was really thinking about staying on the sidewalk.
But she wants to add that two days?
She, yeah, two Thursday night.
Well, this coming Thursday night.
Yeah. That would give people the option to sit down and have a beverage if they wanted to.
Will that be open the whole, I mean, the whole night, or is it, will it, will it cease once Thursday's night? Five to 10, okay.
So, and I know our common consumption goes till eight, and I've already had questions if we can extend that to 10, but I want to see how it goes. I think we all do, so just.
The common consumption is.
And so she knows the common consumption rules, and she will not be serving the plastic cups or bracelets after eight o'clock. But they could come into her beer garden Thursday and still have a beverage, because I think she, they're doing trivia, and there's going to be other things going on downtown later, so that was her idea to, to keep interest.
I don't see an issue. I think they're already doing it anyways.
Well, it's kind of a test thing, and we're just kind of testing things out, and things may change. The work of process, so.
Well, basically what she's doing is no different than a beer garden.
Right, exactly.
No different, though, it's yet been given, it's just a different location due to her common consumption stuff. She's.
She's applied for all of the necessary things to do.
Yeah, she's already licensed to do it. Yep, and I will publish that, if it passes Thursday morning, I'll run in the papers.
Well, that being said, I make a motion to the ordinance exempting the application of KSA 41-719D to allow the sale of, of consumption of alcohol liquor designated area in the east corner of the Central Avenue and Summit Street for one day commencing June 6th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, so we moved second, any other discussion? Okay, if not, it's going to be a roll call vote.
Beeson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Stoman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Motion carries. Items discussed by the city commission.
I just want to bring up Thursday, first Thursday, some merchants in motion are trying to revive, help us revive downtown. They're going to have a bunch of food trucks set up, a petting zoo, Axrow. And then they've kind of organized a cruise of Summit Street.
Every first Thursday at Eastmont?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Just like to annoy people.
Yes. Well, it's, it will start this Thursday?
This Thursday, yeah. The cruise is, just to be a cruise, not a burnout contest.
And I don't, I hate to interrupt, I know they're not having it the first Thursday of July because it hits on.
Yeah.
But they will.
Uh, anybody else? I have.
Okay, I had a, I had a gentleman, I was eating breakfast at Daisy Mae's, and a gentleman came and talked to me a little bit of some stuff. And I would like to, I know Chief Holloway's not here. But he was talking, and I think it makes a lot of sense, and it got me thinking of some other things, but he was talking about the, the stoplight on B Street Madison. With that school no longer being in, that light is pretty much, there's no reason for it to be there. So, and then I got to thinking about, you know, back, the, the stoplight at the, at the post office and at the library. I'm not so sure, we couldn't remove those as well. I know back in the seventies when those lights were put up, there was a lot of, a lot of traffic at the, at the post office and probably the library as well. But with people paying their bills online and communication through email, I, I just wonder if there's a need for them anymore. And if there's not a need, I don't see why we're holding people up or, or, you know, using money to, to keep those lights running, replacing light bulbs, whatever it takes. So if we could get a traffic study done maybe by the, by Chief Holloway to see if we could remove.
Yeah, I'll visit with Chief, and we'll see what we can do to evaluate that.
And maybe look at some of the other ones around town, too, that's not, you know, low, you know.
I know we're not, we're kind of known for all these lights right along Main Street, but I don't know if we couldn't take out every other one of those as well, because all the time that you stop, you're stopped for no reason, you're just, there's no cars going through, especially right, you know, through this lane or right outside City Hall. Down a couple others, I, you know, by the.
They probably want to do this kind of, that traffic study on the Main Street part of it.
We've had this discussion before, removing stoplights and, and there, there was a lot of people against it.
And I think they were against it just because it's the hometown charm, it's always been that way, but if it doesn't make any sense, I don't know why we're doing it.
Doesn't the school districts still use Lincoln School as a pickup point?
No. No. There is some.
I know they sold it, but I thought they were still using it as a pickup.
There's a bus, I believe.
Yeah, to keep the shelter there.
Yeah.
Oh, they did? Okay.
And I did notice there was some construction there, was, was going, do we know what's going?
That community health, uh.
Going in.
Going in there.
Okay.
So there'll be some additional traffic with that, I'm not sure.
I don't think it would still be enough to warrant. Okay, thank you.
We had our workstation, or, on Friday, for, I mean, legislation for city, we talked about wellness for employees. So we had a hospital board meeting today, and I brought that up, and they're going to get with Marlin and Randy, that may be to try to work something out, you know, some kind of wellness program, and see if we can't get something going that we talked about, so. And then the other thing I heard today, the Chick-fil-A is going to be in town next Wednesday, testing this area, so we need to make sure everybody buys Chick-fil-A on Wednesday and next week. Make sure you keep busy, because we might be able to get them to come in, Ark City, so.
And Mayor, if I may say, they did that in Winfield, too, a week or two ago, so we've really got to get people out. If it's a competition, we want to win that.
You know, it's the Vikings again.
That's right, baby. You need to put it on.
They're going to be friendly board, I know. The application they got was spring.
Spring, yeah.
They called and asked for recommendations.
Can we have that in the paper? That in the paper?
Free after.
That's all, I got, anybody else got anything?
If you want to talk about, we're going to do that thing for you on the lines.
I think she's taking care of it.
Yeah.
Did.
Well, I'm going to add, I'm going to add to it with what they do, they pick up, uh, uh, people at the hospital when they can't get a ride home and stuff, I want that included, too.
Sounds good.
Yeah. All right, anybody else got anything? Okay, if not, this week, I think you got comments for the audience?
Shay Stone from 228 Random Road is here to address the commission.
Yeah, I did right there.
Okay. I am Shay Stone from 228 Random Road here in Ark City. And I've got some statements prepared that I'm. Well, know we are Christians by our love. Released by jars of clay in 2005, this song followed me through the halls of Ark City High School. My friends and I sang it on repeat and really did our best to live by it in the way that we treated others. That's forward to 2024, and love is the last word I would use to describe how to tell if someone is a Christian. Not because all Christians are bad, but because a lot of bad people are using religion to justify me and hateful. At two weeks old, I was baptized at Sacred Heart Catholic Church, and in second grade, I had my first confession in first communion. Despite being a member of the First Southern Baptist Church, my grandma Phyllis showed up and supported me as I completed the sacraments. She didn't have to believe in them herself. And if she had lived long enough for me to come out to her, I firmly believe she would be here fooling me today. Unfortunately, the man and woman who raised me failed to take any notes from her and exposed me to a dark and hateful side of religion after she passed. When I was in middle school, the Hispanic community in Ark City grew tremendously. And because many of them were Catholic, our priests started saying masses in both English and Spanish. This enraged my parents so much that we stopped being active in the church. This was only the start of hearing them use derogatory terms to describe anyone of a race other than white, religion other than Catholic, or sexuality other than straight. Because of this, I prayed to God almost every night to make me straight, before finally coming out to them at the age of 21. It's been 13 years since they disowned me, and their hate for the LGBTQ plus community, especially me, has only intensified. Two years ago, my biological mother reached out to me via Facebook Messenger to remind me that she wishes she weren't my mom and that I had never been born. Because she was a teacher at Ark City Middle School, I felt that it was my responsibility to let people know how someone they trusted to care for and teach their own children treats her own. I received an overwhelming amount of support from so many people in this town. Not because they suddenly became allies, but because we could agree that it's never okay to treat people that way. So why was it that last year, when Timothy Atkins and the Table of Hope Church tried to put on a family-friendly drag show, the Burford Theater received so much backlash that they canceled the event? Even after the age limit was changed to 18 and other locations were found, the organizers and performers continued to receive so many violent threats that they canceled altogether. This year, an Arkansas City taxpayer felt entitled to remove a sign at the public library advertising Winfield's Pride Festival because it goes against their personal beliefs. Library Director Mindy Thon still said it best, "We are promoting a community event. Promoting understanding and inclusivity does not equate to endorsing political agendas. It is a very targeted attack." My goal today is not to turn any of you into allies. I am simply asking you to acknowledge that the LGBTQ plus community exists in Ark City, and attempting to hate and threaten a marginalized group out of existence is unacceptable. Every person in this room loves someone who is gay, lesbian, bisexual, or trans. And some of them believe they're better off dead than coming out in a town like this. Speak up and silence the hate. Be the reason they'll know you're a Christian by your love. Thank you. Thank you.
The Burford thing, that wasn't the Burford that canceled it, it was done, it was a promoter decided not to do it. I just want to make that clear to you.
Okay, either way, it was hated.
He was renting the venue, the Burford didn't care, one way or the other.
Yeah. Because I was on the board there.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming forth, and thank you for expressing yourself.
Do you think a lot of the suicides that have been happening is because of this, this hatred pressure?
Absolutely, and it's been proven. If you look at Oklahoma, it's insane how many kids are calling their suicide hotlines, and how many kids have committed suicide since the passing of Next Benedict. Y'all have heard that story about a non-binary student that was bullied in a restroom for not using the restroom that they thought that person should be using. And they ultimately took their own lives to escape.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forth, it takes a lot of courage for you to do this, say that, thank you for this. City manager updates?
Um, I had a meeting with the representatives from Cali Hill, Cali House of Hope here recently. They, you know, they just finished up a, a house there in Winfield and would like to address the Ark City community again. So they'll probably, it'll probably be in August, early August, they'll want to come back and visit with you guys again about the possibility of, of building a house similar to what they've done in Winfield here. On housing, Josh and I met with a, a group called the Nash Group last week. They're interested in exploring some housing development here in the community. The gentleman that, the principal of the group, he was a former city council member in Kent City. They've, uh, he's done a lot of development up in that area and in, in Florida, so they have private experience on, on housing development, and primarily affordable workforce type housing is kind of what they target. So we'll, uh, we'll kind of keep talking to them, see what they come up with. Josh and I also, and Mike, had a meeting today with PC on that master planning for, for the acreage that we have up north. And so that will go to the planning commission on July 9th. And then, and then there will be a, a public, a public hearing, or a public meeting with that information coming out between that, that meeting and the commission meeting in August. And we'll have the public come in and be able to provide feedback and stuff on that. So from those two meetings, and whatever changes need to be tweaked on that, that will then come to, to you guys in the first meeting in August. He's got the plan at this point. That was looking pretty good, we were impressed with what we were seeing there. Meets a lot of our housing needs, well, all of our housing needs in that one area, so. The travel center, they're going to be moving the equipment in on June 9th and start scarifying the property. The archaeologists will be here on June 13th, and when they start doing the, the actual.
So how long will they, they have to be here?
Uh, just during the excavation piece of it, once they get the excavation.
Once you get that pot or top scraped off?
Yeah. And just any of that disturbed soil, once that's done, they'll be gone.
Will they have to be here when we run the sewer line?
And, I don't, that's a good question, I don't think so, because that's a different piece of property.
Okay.
But, um.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's right.
Yeah. But I'll, I'll verify that before.
But I'm pretty sure they don't, they won't be on private property. They're not allowed on private property.
Okay. Yeah, we've, we're going across private property, most of that, but there'll be a little bit of suit property there, we'll have to check into that. So that project, we can see some activity there now. We also met with a, a company called Ideatech. They do fiber optic internet in communities, and they're looking at doing a fiber optic installation here in Ark City. So it'd be two premises to homes and, and businesses. And so that will, they're wanting to present a franchise agreement to the commission here in the near future, which would allow them to start constructing that, so we'll kind of keep you posted on that. But that would give our, give our citizens another option on, on internet service and, and.
A little bit cheaper rates, yeah.
Yeah, it's more affordable, definitely. Five, it's fiber to the home, which we don't have now, which pretty much have copper internet to the home now. So it opens up a lot of doors there with internet, so. And speaking of franchise agreement, I got an email from Evergy this week, the, it's time to renew our franchise agreement with them, so we'll be having, we'll be bringing that to you guys here in the near future. And then finally, we have a special budget work session on this Thursday at noon, and it'll be here in this room. Outside agencies will come in and present their requests for the 2025 budget, so. See you there with that one, so. That's all I've got.
Let's be served level 30. We'll have fruit for you.
Thank you. Or steak.
Maybe.
I'm just, don't get me anything special.
One round steak.
That's right. Is there anything else, anybody wants to, steak is good. If not, I make a motion. I make a motion carries.